This meeting of the Margate City Planning Board is called to order. Roll call, please. I forgot the flag salute. Please rise for the flag salute. This meeting is being held in accordance with New Jersey Sunshine Law. It has been advertised in the press and in the municipal building on the bulletin board. When applicants are done with their case, please see the board administrator to get the information you need. I'd like to hear a motion to approve the minutes of October 25th, 2018. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Like to hear a motion for the approval of decisions and resolutions. Number 44, 2018, 301 North Vendome Avenue LLC. Number 45, 2018, Vision Property Group LLC. Number 46, 2018, Randy Stein. Number 47, 2018, Eileen Inselman. Number 48, 2018, 9707 Amherst Marina LLC. Hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Opposed? None. Motion passes. First case is Frank and Gina Freon, 117 North Osborne Avenue, Block 315, Lot 5, in the S-30 district to grant C variances relief for rear yard setback, side yard setback, building coverage, oversized accessory structure, landscape coverage, parking, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. It looks like they spelled Frank wrong, but we'll pass on that. Oh, was it? Mr. McLaren, would you be sworn in?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Wazleski is recusing himself? And Joe is recusing himself? Mr. McLaren?
Mr. Wazleski's on the 200-foot list, that's why he's recusing. Mr. McLaren, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. My report is based on the application of Frank and Gina Freon at 117 North Osborne Avenue, Block 315, Lot 5, in the S-30 zone. They're seeking variances for the following reasons. Some background, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the City of Margate in order to renovate and provide an addition to a pre-firm dwelling. The proposal was to add a rear room off the kitchen, relocate utilities, and add a deck in the rear, actually just scratch the deck. But these additions require some variances, and they're an expansion of non-consistent, non-compliant setbacks. Zoning chart is on Page 1 and 2. The documents reviewed are on Page 2 as well. Section 3, the variances required. And just as a little side note, the architect and I went back and forth several times on this project to help streamline the process, so I think what you see is a result of some cooperation between the applicant and myself. Rear yard setback, whereas 16 feet is a required minimum, 7 feet exists and 7 feet is proposed. It's an expansion of a non-conforming setback. They're adding on to the one side and maintaining that non-compliant setback. Building coverage, whereas 30 percent is a maximum permitted, 25.6 percent exists, and 31.75 percent is proposed. Accessory structure shed in regard to area, whereas 80 square feet is a maximum permitted, and 128 square feet is proposed. Accessory structure shed in regard to height, whereas 9 feet from grade is a maximum permitted, and 10 feet 4 inches is proposed. Off-street parking, since they're adding a bedroom, I added this in there, whereas 2.5 spaces are required based on four bedrooms, or five, I believe, was it four? Zero spaces exist, zero spaces are proposed, as per RSIS. The addition of the bedroom triggers this requirement. Waivers requested, they listed the street trees as a variance, and it's actually a design waiver. That's why it's not listed in the variances. The comments are as follows, a rear yard setback is an expansion of an existing non-conforming setback. Front yard shrub cash shall meet the ordinance. I don't think they'll have any issues with that. The grass governor strip is to be restored, that's shown on the plans. They are requesting a waiver for street trees. The planting strip is wide enough to provide room for trees and give the canopy effect, so I would suggest that the board consider requiring the trees in the planting strip. Building coverage is more than permitted, but it is a large lot. The shed is oversized and higher than permitted, so as to provide a 5-on-12 roof pitch, even though it's not required, but it will match the principal structure. And the height is not that significant. Comment number 7 is there are mature trees on the site, including cedars, that should remain intact as measures shall be undertaken to protect them. Recommendations are as typical for the C variances, that they have to provide adequate testimony. And again, there are other recommendations, but I defer to the testimony to be provided by the applicant to support their application.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. My name's Chris Ballen, and I represent, let me slow down for a second. I represent Frank and Gina Freon. Gina's maiden name is Casey. This is kind of a feel-good application we can start the night out with. It's Gina and her husband Frank moving back to her childhood home, a home that their mother has maintained up until these guys just bought it last month. I see we've got family up for support, Granny and Donna.
Do I hear music in the background, Mr. Ballen?
Just give me a little bit of time. But I don't want to take too much time, because we've got a good Cowboys game on tonight. Frank and Gina are going to renovate the entire house, and it is in need of renovation. The house is probably early 1900s. Everybody is probably familiar with it. It's one of the lone houses in Margate that kind of sits up on a hill. It's a really neat location, kind of up on a hill in the middle of the block. The renovation, though, because you're working with the existing footprint on a large lot, lots 6160 square feet, does necessitate variances, because one of the purposes of this renovation is to keep Mrs. Casey, so Mrs. Casey can live with these guys. And what is proposed in that regard, Bob, I need a plan. Do you have something? Is that your plan?
Yes.
What is, what's being proposed in that regard is, in addition to the rear left corner, as you look at the house from the street, that's a two-story addition, it'll allow Mrs. Casey her own bedroom at the first floor level, and above that is an expansion of the master bedroom. The master bedroom, older-style summer home, it's small, no closets, and that is just not tolerable. So that's, that room will be expanded, and I believe one bedroom is being added for a total of four bedrooms at the end of the day. Let me kind of list the variances as we go through them and comment upon each of them, and then I'll have Bob sworn in. The operative variance really is the rear yard setback variance. The house currently exists at a rear yard setback of 7 feet running along the rear property line. We will make, we will hold that rear yard setback at 7 feet. You can see it's nicely landscaped back there. It kind of should go unnoticed, because there's a fairly significant amount of landscaping along that rear lot line, especially in the back left corner where there are the mature trees. So for a length of about, I think, 20 feet for that bedroom at the first floor, that 7 feet will be maintained. As that addition comes around the house, on the north side, it expands out a foot and a half, but still meets and complies with the side yard setback on that side. That's the first element of the renovation. The second significant element of the renovation really is the deck on the right side. That deck replaces an existing flagstone patio, but it has to meet the setback requirements, because it's going to be about 3 feet above where that was. It is smaller than the flagstone patio, but gives these guys a little outdoor space, aside from the front porch, where there's really no backyard space because of the small rear yard setback. The only element of that side patio that requires a setback is the stairs, Roger, and I'm not sure that it does. I just wanted to run that.
No, I took a look at that, and I believe that it does not require a variance. However, the rear yard setback variance does include the deck, too.
For the back of the deck?
Right.
Understood. But I was up in the air whether or not the steps to that deck required side yard, and if not...
Yeah, because that existing deck is that grade, and you have to get down to it anyway, so the steps are accessory to this deck that complies.
So the deck therefore meets the side yard setback. The house meets side yard setbacks on both sides. Even with the renovation, the only footprint variance is that rear yard setback. Because we are bringing a young family, the kids are 18 and early 20s, so for each kids, we are proposing a larger-than-permitted shed to the rear left corner, again, within the landscaped area. 80 feet, 80 square feet is permitted. The shed is proposed at 128 square feet, about 48 feet bigger than is permitted. There is no freestanding garage. There is no garage in the property. This is the only outside storage that's available. And really, because of the location and the height and the elevation of the property, you really won't notice that shed, although Bob has designed it kind of to match the elements of the house. The size of the shed really matches the scale of the house. And we've also brought the height up, so we can bring the roof to a 512 pitch, which matches the pitch on the house, so they kind of, they go together. We don't think it's too offensive. We think the aesthetic trade-off is more than worth it. Due to the addition at the rear left corner, coverage will increase, pushing over the 30 percent permitted by about a point and a half, or 1.75 percent negligible variance, but a variance on the left. Coverage is allowed to be 30. I think we're at 31.75, so that's still a variance. So you have the rear yard setback, no side yard setback, rear yard setback, coverage at 1.75 percent. The shed area, shed height, I will discuss with Roger, the parking. Interestingly, this house has no off-street parking. There's always been plenty of off-street parking there on both sides of the street, but probably because of the elevation and the quick increase in grade, you can't get a driveway up the sides of, the side of the house, so it would work, so it was never actually done. I think because of bedrooms being added, that would necessitate one space. I think, Roger, we're grandfathered for the existing lack of parking. So either way, I think there's a parking variance. I say it's for one space. Mr. McLaren can say it's for the whole kit and caboodle. Either way, that it's being requested. There's just no place to put it. Street trees, we have located the street trees instead of in the curb strip, which will be replaced, the governor strip will be replaced. We have put those in the front yard, only to add to the existing landscape package, so it's kind of, to prevent the trees on the street, on curb lines from blocking the house and light the renovation that takes place. I leave that up to you guys. If you really want the canopy effect along the curb line, I don't think these guys have a problem with it. It's such a nice landscape package, especially with the trees. We thought they would look better and do better upland of the curb. The mature cedars that are to the left of the lot, they stay. They are part of the development plan and the landscape package, so they're staying. They're staying, and some of you may have seen that strange irrigation swale kind of meandering through the property. That's being taken out. That's concrete. That's being taken out and relocated along the side property line, directing water in the direction that it's supposed to go toward the street, not throughout the lot, and that thing flows, spills over. No zoning relief to that, just a, I, it kind of looks like the old Vernon Valley sled thing that goes through the mountains, but that's being taken out and relocated. Bob Reynolds did the renovation design. I might have Bob speak a little bit about what he's done and what the Freons asked him to do. Bob, you'll be sworn in?
If you come to the microphone, state your name and business address, and I'll swear you in.
Robert Reynolds, 109 Iona Avenue, Lynwood, New Jersey.
And you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? Thank you.
Bob, you're licensed in the State of New Jersey as an architect?
Yes.
And did the renovation plan?
Yes.
For the Freons? If you would, Bob, just tell us what it is that they asked you to do when they came to see you for the work, and how you achieved or hope to have achieved that potential.
Well, you outlined it pretty good, Chris, in your opening statement. The idea is Mrs. Casey will...
Stay with them?
Stay with them. Frank and Gina will move in. This house is a little over 100 years old. They've only had, I believe, three owners.
Chris, I don't want to interrupt you. At some point, just qualify him.
Well, I just didn't want to interrupt this flow.
Sorry.
So basically, what we did is provide some bedrooms for the Freon's two children.
How many bedrooms right now, Bob?
Well, right now, there's four.
Okay, and there is a rearrangement of some walls and stuff, so where do we end up at with bedroom count?
Well, let me step back. The, there's a small girl's bedroom that's a study. We're making a study. It's very small. It would probably be unsuitable by today's standards for a bedroom. Very small, so we're going to make that like a little study computer room. So we...
How many actual bedrooms will there be when the house is done?
One on the downstairs.
Three upstairs?
Three upstairs. A large bedroom will be divided on the second floor in the front of the house.
Total of four bedrooms?
Total of four bedrooms.
Okay, and right now, there's four bedrooms? We're just reconfiguring them somewhere?
We're reconfiguring them.
Bob, you heard me outline the variances. Did I do that accurately for saving time, hopefully?
Yes, as I understood.
Are there any additional variances that I didn't touch upon that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do you think any of the variances that we are asking for, and particularly, let's talk about the rear yard setback for the two-story addition, do you think those variances have a substantial impact on the neighbor either to the rear or to the left of the house?
No, I don't.
Why?
Because of the, the building is relatively unobscure in terms of height. And we've cut back the portion of the roof around the sides, so there's...
Softer to the side?
A little softer on the side, on the side yard.
And how tall is the house overall? Two stories, am I right?
Yes.
How tall, what's the height?
The peak of the proposed roof is slightly higher, and by slightly higher means by...
Higher than existing?
18 inches than the peak of the existing.
Okay, how high is that? Approximately? Well, we're permitted to be 30 feet if it's a new house, right, Bob?
Yeah. The existing height...
Anything else?
Is 20 feet 4 5/8 to the peak.
So about 22 feet at the end of the day? Bob, the new patio on the right side of the house is going to be about 3 feet above the existing grade?
Yes, that's here.
And you heard Mr. McLaren say that a rear yard setback variance will be required for that? Do you agree with that?
Yes, because...
Because it beats the rear yard setback at 7 feet?
Yes, in this area.
Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Reynolds?
No, what we tried to do is, the house needs a lot of work. We need a new roof, some new windows, and other things. Redamping of the electrical system and HVAC systems. But we're, the house is unique and has, has, carries a great deal of sentimental value to Gina, and so we're trying to maintain elements that are there now, but improve upon deficiencies.
Thank you, Bob. I'd like to call Gina quickly, just to give you an idea of what their plan is for the house and...
Do you want to qualify him?
No, but I will. I'm sure that I need that. Mr. Reynolds, you're a licensed architect in the State of New Jersey? Okay, and you're a resident of Margate? You grew up here?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and give us the benefit of your architectural background and work experience.
I've worked with...
Not day-to-day, just generally?
A lot of school construction, municipal construction.
You've done residential homes in Margate and other shore communities?
Yes, I have.
And your license has been issued and not revoked or withdrawn for any reason over the years?
No, I still carry it.
Is that okay, Mr. Ballen?
It's okay with me.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Bob. Gina Freon, Casey, please, just briefly, and then we'll wrap up. Gina, you'll need to be sworn in?
Just state your name for the record. Gina Freon.
And your address is 117 North Osborne. So do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Make sure you acknowledge your husband, Frank, the whole time.
Frank is my husband.
And I'm not going to ask any questions.
I'm Gina Freon, Gina Casey Freon, not Gina Freon Casey. The whole thing is really upsetting him a little. It's all good. It's a family home, 50 years. That's why the Casey name keeps coming up. It is my maiden name. My parents bought the house 50 years ago this spring, when I was a couple of months old. So we have, when I say we, really immediate family has had it, my brother and his wife are here as well. But my mom raised five kids there. I'm one of them. We've, you know, been doing everything possible there for all 50 years. We, my husband and I started out in Margate. You know, won't tell you that story, how he got me out of Margate, but he's paying for it now. So we're trying to get back. We've been... Yeah, that's why he's so stressed out. He's like, darn, I should have kept that first house. We had a great house in Marvin Gardens, but this was meant to be, hopefully, that we left that wonderful house and ended up 20 years in Lynwood, and we've had a lovely life there, but we've always been drawn to being back in Margate. We've spent every holiday and every special moment in my mom's house, what we call my mom's house, or mom's house, or now the Osborne house. You know, we don't refer to it yet as our house. It is our house. We own it, but really, it will be our family home going forward, hopefully another 50 years. We would like to, you know, be those people who can say, our grandkids can say, you know, hey, you know, our great grandparents bought this house, and it's been here since 1915.
The Osborne house will be your year-round residence?
It will be our year-round house, yeah.
Do you guys own and operate a local business?
We own and operate a business in Ag Harbor Township, so this is actually further for us, but with all the things that are seemingly not logical about doing this, this is where we want to be.
That's all I have. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Anything else, Roger, I need to address?
No, I just want to point out a couple of things. At the rear shower, the outside shower complies with the setback requirements. The new AC condensers, I don't think you need to put screening around it with the mature trees you have and the shrubs. I think that would be adequate.
Got that noted?
I don't want to see you have to put a fence around something like that. Can we talk about the trees now? I know the board's opinion is...
The street trees?
You should keep the street trees, if you want to argue about it.
I'm not going to argue about it. Does these guys tell me to keep them on the governor's strip? That's where they'll go. Two trees.
Can I make a contingency that you keep those two white cedars? White cedars, white cedars stay.
Yes, they're staying. They're staying. Glenn was going to make sure of what you told me. They're staying.
Any questions from the board?
I just want a clarification from Roger, because I understand what you're saying about the canopy in the street, but to me, street trees are, if they put them in front of the house or on the curb, they're still meeting the two-tree requirement?
In some cases, we do recommend that the trees go behind the sidewalk, whereas overhead utility lines that would conflict.
I understand all that, but also, you know, going forward, and I know where we're looking at with canopies and stuff, but I also look at the cost of what it is to Margate, because you get all these trees into the street, and then the sewers clog up, and we're cleaning the sewers, we're flooding properties. It's a bigger issue than just saying we should...
Well, it's going to clog the sewer, whether it's behind the sidewalk or from the sidewalk.
Not if it's on the guy's lawn and they clean it up.
Well, I disagree with that. The sewer goes to the house. However...
Just clarification. I wasn't sure if they're...
I think in this particular instance, the street trees are adequate between the curb and the sidewalk. And that's a desire of the green team in Margate. That's what they want to have. I'm presenting the same argument to them. Pardon me?
We don't work for the green team in Margate.
Yeah, we work for us, and this board's discussed it many times, and we want the street trees.
They're in my truck. I'll bring them.
Internal love. We bleed it.
I don't have anything else, Mike, I'm sorry.
I just have one question for Robert. You're in, filling the basement?
We are...
Filling the basement? So it's going to make the house compliant?
Yes.
Very good.
We will deal with, that's a work in progress.
You're going to fill a crawl space, but you're in, filling the basement?
We are going to...
All of the hot water heater, the electric...
Mike, we're...
I need it on microphone, Chris.
We are working with a flood official to make sure it's compliant.
You're making it compliant, that's all I...
Anything else on the board? Anyone here from the public like to comment? Come forward, be sworn in.
State your name and address, and I'll swear you in.
David Weinberg, 8 White Court, Voorhees, New Jersey.
And you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
8 White, White Court?
Court.
Voorhees, okay, thank you.
We live next door to Gina and her family, and they are wonderful neighbors. My questions really relate to the shed. Prior to this variance request, a number of years ago, they had a small metal shed, which they had removed, and one of the reasons, besides I suspect its deteriorating condition, was that water would run off the shed and occasionally come into our yard during rainstorms, et cetera. I have no idea if this particular shed will create this same issue of water runoff.
It's not allowed to.
That was my understanding.
Right.
And since it wasn't addressed, I wanted to ask if that was at all the case.
I can answer that. Usually when I do my final inspections, if the gutter runs on the neighbor's property, I make them replace the gutter, the downspout onto the property. They usually put stones on it. We allow stones, and we also, as part of our new ordinance, we require the shed to be one foot inside the property line now, as opposed to being on the property, just to provide for extra space for the water to stay on the property and not go into your property.
Terrific. And my only other question had to do with the two cedar trees. Then we're done. It will. Like I said, they are wonderful neighbors, and we're excited for their project.
Anyone else? Public portion is closed. Any other comments or questions from the board? Would you read the motion, please?
Sure. Chris, I think to be on the safe side, I'll keep the parking, I'll phrase it as 2.5 are required. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me that one would be required, because on the end, one bedroom, one space is required, but whatever your legal analysis is, I don't provide that.
All right, timeout. Nothing of this is going on the recorder, so you're going to have to re-present the entire case. Just keep in mind that you have to have your experts have the microphone in their hand. I'm not saying this isn't going on the recorder. Just you talk into a mic and make sure your expert has the mic.
I will do that. I thought it, sorry.
It's her. I don't care. She...
You can yell straight at me. It's okay.
Cat dragged me.
Will do.
I guess I pissed him off.
The parking space, Roger, I...
It's called an existing non-conformant, that we just want to get it on the record. You never comply, you won't comply, and we're fine.
And a variance is required because the bedroom's being added, I would view as that...
You have 77 feet of frontage, you know, it's...
Okay, yes, I would agree that a variance is required. I think I asked for it. We on the same page?
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, I'm just going to say 2.5 are required and 0 are proposed, but we understand the testimony.
That's great, thank you.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, someone needs to make a motion for C variance relief for the filing. Rear yard setback of 7 feet, where 16 feet's required. Building coverage of 31.75 percent, where 30 percent's the permitted maximum. For the area of the shed at 128 square feet, where 80 square feet's permitted. The height of the shed at 10 feet 4 inches, where 9 feet above grade is the permitted maximum. The parking variance for 0 spaces, where 2.5 spaces are required. The waiver request, I believe, goes away because of the condition that they're going to put two street trees in the governor's strip, and the other conditions will be, all other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report on November 29th, 2018, and the applicant will... will comply with all representations made during the course of the hearing.
And that rear yard setback is for the building and the deck?
Correct. It all extends. It doesn't exacerbate the seven feet, where it elongates it.
I make a motion?
I'll second it.
Tom Collins?
Based upon the very uniqueness of this property, the lot, and what you're proposing to do, I actually think this is better than if you tore it down and rut it down. And yeah. So it's very de minimis. I don't think it's really going to have any hardship on the homeowners or anybody in the neighborhood. I think it's got a lot of positive criteria that would add to the aesthetics, to the character, to everything that you're doing. And they give you a lot of credit. You're maintaining a family home instead of tearing down a nice house, and you're keeping something that's special to you. So I vote in favor.
Clem Wazlaski? Oh, I'm sorry. Jim Gallantino?
I missed a case.
Okay. Rich Patterson?
Like Tom said, we love seeing these old houses, and nice old houses like this, being restored and brought up to current standards. I know across the street on the corner at Davidson's house, they tore down a beautiful house and jammed two houses in it. And that's not happening here. It surprises me that they're actually over 1 percent on coverage, because it seems like there's nothing but landscaping on this property. They have that huge oak tree in the back. I don't see any detriment to any neighbors, to anything with light and air, and I approve the application.
Mike Cristaldi?
In agreement with the rest of the board members, you know, saving the look of Margate, saving the two white cedar trees, bringing it up to code so it's code compliance, I don't see any negatives on this thing at all. I just see positives, so I vote in favor of.
Craig Palmasana?
I agree with the fellow board members also. The rear yard setback is existing, nonconforming. And there is no garage on the structure, on the site, so they need a shed, and a little larger one won't hurt. There's no detriment, and I love having the trees saved and an older house remodeled. I vote for it.
The variances requested are, I don't see them as substantial. I see no negative impact to the neighbor or neighborhood. The building coverage is de minimis. The rear yard setback and off-street parking are staying as they exist. I think the shed is a nice aesthetic trade-off, and it's matching the house aesthetically. I think the house is going to look great. It's an improvement. I vote in favor of the application, and welcome home.
Joe Teacher, all of them? Back there. Okay, Ron Gruppo?
I also am in favor of the application. I think it's commendable, and first of all, helping your mother and your mother-in-law stay in their home. And secondly, I'm very excited that an older house with good bones is being renovated, and you're keeping the bones in place of the house. And I think that's great. And I don't want to see another tear down and a house go up there. I don't live too far from there, so I think it's going to be great for the neighborhood. So I approve the variances.
Mike Richmond?
Yeah, a few of the houses in that neighborhood didn't have, my mother-in-law's being one of them, didn't have parking, didn't have any driveway or anything like that. That's just the way they were built, so it actually kind of fits into the neighborhood pattern of the neighborhood. And I mean, the other variances are de minimis. You know, the shed, unless you're going to make it a bedroom, I don't see a problem making it look better, so. I'm going to approve it.
The application passes seven to nothing.
Thank you all very much.
Next case is Marcy B. Tanker, 11 North Iroquois Avenue, block 210.02, lot 10, in the S-25 district, to grant a C. variance relief for front yard setback to deck on first floor, front yard setback to second floor, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfying. Mr. McClellan?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. My report is in... My report is in regard to application of Mark, Marcy Tanker, 11 North Iroquois Avenue, block 210.02, lot 10, in the S-25 zone. They are, according to preliminary firm app, required bottom of floor elevation is elevation 12. Zoning starts at 13. This is a substantial benefit variance. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances at the city of Margate in order to construct a new single-family dwelling with several variances being requested. One of them might be eliminated as provided by the testimony. Zoning chart for the district is on page 1 and 2. As documents review, it is on page 3. Formulate my report. Section 3, the variance is required as follows. Front yard setback for the porch, whereas six feet is required prevailing setback, five feet is a minimum, and five feet is proposed. The second variance is an outside shower enclosure, whereas the required minimum setback is three feet, and one feet is proposed.
Mr. McClellan, that variance can be withdrawn.
Yes. I did receive an email from the architect showing the shower being relocated, but the plans I had to base my report on did not show that. Waiver is requested. A 200-foot map is to be provided, but it has not been provided. I suggest a waiver be requested for that. Comments are as follows. A proposed front yard setback to the porch meets the minimum but exceeds the prevailing. Iroquois Avenue has historically had front yard setbacks. The porch is closer than permitted. And even if this is granted to be allowed to be at the five foot, if you look up and down a block, it actually helps the average. Front yard landscaping errors are not shown. It will be required to be shown on the revised plans. My calculations by scaling, I find that they do comply, which meets the minimum required because of the steps and the stairs for entry to the first floor. Exterior shower, we just kind of touched on that. A third-floor deck is proposed, but that's for the AC units with service access to a window. Applicant has a note on the plans that all landscaping and tree shall comply. For variance relief, section 6, they have to provide adequate testimony to justify the front yard setback variance. So I leave that to the applicant to provide. And again, block rating shall be from the rear of the property to the front, so all the runoff goes to the street. Street opening permits will be required. Two street trees in a governor's strip with grass shall be shown on the plans. I think they did show the grass strip. But again, the note, I took it as a note from the architect saying that everything's going to comply, so I just want to see that on a plan, too.
You're not even here.
That concludes my report. It's a very basic variance request.
Thank you, members of the board. I represent Marcy and Mark Tanker, this evening, who are the owners of the property, and as mentioned, propose a new house on the property with only a single variance being requested, which is for the front yard setback of the mandatory minimum of five feet versus six feet required. There are no other variances being requested. The new home that will conform in all other respects to the ordinance's requirements. This variance is being submitted based upon the general proposition that every property stands on its own. I would typically not request a front yard setback variance these days with new construction. But in light of the front yard setback survey, you will see that the front yard setbacks to porches on this particular side of the street range anywhere from four feet to six feet, kind of falling right in the middle of that. And as Roger said, putting this porch and deck at five feet actually pushes the numbers up a little bit and brings the average up a little bit. The house itself, the principal structure, will conform. Mark will tell you that their goal was to bring a variance-free application forward, but when, seeing that the house on the one side, the principal structure, is really a filled-in sun porch at four and a half feet from the property line, and the other side, just five feet to the porch, that they thought a trade-off of five to their house would not impact either of those property owners and give them the benefit of at least being up with everybody else on that side of the street because of the way that street has developed. Young man, would you like to say a couple of words? Okay. I do not have an architect tonight. Mr. Zawaki, we left him in Florida, and hopefully we can do this without him, if that's okay with the board.
Just name an address for the record, please.
Yes, Mark Tanker, 913 Waverly Road, Bryn Mawr, Pennsylvania.
And you swear affirm the testimony, give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mark, you and your wife are the owners of the property?
We are.
And you propose a new single-family home on the lot?
Yes, we do.
The variance that's being advanced this evening, as you know, is for the front yard setback of one foot to the porch and the deck of five feet versus six feet. How did you arrive at having to make that request or deciding to make that request this evening to the board?
So the front porch is very important to us, and when the calculations were made, it became clear that because of the multiple nonconforming lots on Iroquois, many of which have no porch, but the building structure actually beyond the five-foot minimum that exists now, and some of them having porches further back, that it would, in effect, gave us a disadvantage. It would push our porch further back than many of the adjoining properties. So we're asking for that one foot just to bring our porch equal to adjoining properties so that we would not be put back into a so-called hole.
The location that you're asking for doesn't give you necessarily, like, a blowout, clear view of everything. You're still kind of in line with everybody else?
In line or behind still by a little bit, because some of those homes are nonconforming and are actually closer than five feet.
And you have, in fact, reached out personally to the neighbors on each side to let them know of your request, aside from the certified letter I sent, and have heard nothing back from either of them?
No, no. And we're, you know, we do have an existing home in Margate now. I was born and raised in Margate. Had family here for many, many years in Atlantic City. This was where I grew up. Went to elementary school at Union Avenue in Granville. Lived on Jasper Avenue. And we are planning to spend our retirement days here at Margate. And so it's very important that, you know, we kind of build a house that we're going to look forward to living in for many years, hopefully.
Front porch, is it an aspect of the house you guys use, appreciate, the outside living space?
Yes, we're outside people.
In fact, the house that's coming down, the setback to that, to the principal structure, is under five feet?
Under five feet.
And you're actually improving upon that?
Yes.
Is this the house that, like, a foot from the next-door neighbor's house, on the bayside?
It's not. No, it's more than that. The...
Well, very narrow.
There's a narrow setback.
Yeah. But the new house complies with this.
Complies, yes.
Complies with everything except the one foot for the...
How deep is the porch as designed?
Nine feet.
That's all I have, you guys. That's...
Chris, what's the distance between the neighbors? Isn't the neighbor on the left, the bayside, about the same?
That house is, I think, at 4.7 feet, and the whole house comes out to that setback. The distance between the houses, Jimmy, is 4.8. And our new house, we're going to meet the left-side yard setback. As long as we meet the setback, and they're 4.8, it might be a couple of inches left.
Yeah, I try to measure it, but it's hard to see where the property line was.
Well, we got 4.8 and at least five on that side, so it's almost 10.
All right. The house on the ocean side looked like it was about the same.
On the ocean side, they have a setback of five, five and a half feet. That's to an open porch, I believe. And your porch is open, right?
Yes.
So there's just a difference of about six inches between the two.
Just a quick question, Mr. Tanker. Over here.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Just to clarify what you're saying, you wanted to bring your porch out even. Is that so that you have, you can improve your air and open spaces?
Yes.
The light? Okay. Instead of being pushed back?
Leading the way.
I call that a hole. I don't have anything else. I want, you got a couple more cases to handle on.
Anything else on the board?
Yeah, I get it.
They don't have any cedar trees.
I'm going to hurt him.
We'll get one.
Mike Zawaki is not here, so I can't defend his plant.
Ease up. Roger, you had stated that this would help the 200-foot rule for setbacks by approving
Only because I think...
You're not going below the minimum. Somebody is further down than when we... We've had a lot of variances on this street, not this block in particular.
What I'm saying is, okay, we approved this at five. So then they come in, and now we're taking a five, so they want to go forward. So then it keeps changing as we go.
It's improving from what's there now, I think is what you're saying.
From what's there now.
Yes, right.
But as we've improved this, approved this, we keep changing the 200-foot rule.
And that's going to be a topic of new business tonight.
Yeah.
And that's going to be new business tonight.
Yes.
It's new business, it's old business.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else on the board? Anyone here from the public like to comment? Any questions? Public portion's closed.
Nothing further.
Anything else on the board? Could you read the motion, please?
Sure. Someone needs to make a motion for C. variance relief for front yard setback to the porch of five feet, where six feet is the required prevailing setback. And there's also a waiver from providing the...
For the first floor and second floor deck.
Right, the front yard setback to the first and second floor deck, sure. Five feet or six feet is required. And there's also a waiver from...
Radius map?
Yeah, the radius map.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Tom Collins?
This is pretty easy. It's very de minimis. I think you're actually improving the neighborhood because you're opening up more air, light, and open space. I don't blame you for wanting a nine-foot porch. I don't blame you for wanting to be out front. I see so many houses going up Margate with a three- and four-foot porch, which you can't do anything with. So it's nice that you're coming back to the area. It's a shame you're not young with kids, but we'll take you anyway. And grandchildren. It's very de minimis. I think you're actually going to improve the neighborhood tremendously, and I vote in favor.
Clem Wazlaski?
Well, I'm not sure the unit block north Iroquois is ready for anything so monumental as this is going to be. But unfortunately, that's not on the docket, just the front yard setback for the porch, which I think will fit in with the neighborhood. So for that, I vote in favor.
Jim Gallantino?
Welcome to the neighborhood. The case provided a proof of hardship with their property being the farthest back from the existing properties, and I think that's clear and concise. I say yes.
Rich Patterson?
As the applicant's attorney stated, we usually don't like these front yard setbacks, but I agree that this is different, and this meets the exception. I don't see any problem whatsoever with a setback, and I approve the application.
Mike Cristaldi?
As with the rest of the board members, I'm not crazy about doing it, but I don't see that it's a real problem, so I'm going to vote yes.
Margaret Gubernalti?
You got the board members, and I approve of the application.
Mike Richmond?
I think that because you're not exceeding the minimum five-foot setback, and I think we're going to have more discussion about that ruling, that I'm okay with it. I'm going to approve.
Application passes seven to nothing.
Thank you all very much.
Next case is Glenn, Mr. Collins is recusing himself from this case. Glenn and Danielle McDonald, 7704 Bay Shore Drive, block 904.03, lot 11, in the S-40 district, to grant a C. variance relief for side yard setback and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McClellan?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. My report is based on the application of Glenn and Danielle McDonald, 7704 Bay Shore Drive, block 904.03, lot 11. They're in a zone S-40, preliminary, or the firm AE9 zone, so the bottom of the first floor, if it was new construction, would be at 12. zone, so the bottom of the first floor, if it was new construction, would be at 12. This could be considered a hardship variance and a substantial benefit variance. Background is as follows: The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct in addition to an existing non-flood-compliant single-family home within the S-40 zoning district. Several variances are requested, that's a lot, it's smaller than required, actually, no, I scratched that last one. Zoning chart is on Page 1 and 2, they are seeking one variance to be declared, and that's for a side yard setback for the building, whereas the required minimum side yard setback is 10 feet, 3.2 feet exists, and 3.2 feet is proposed. It's an expansion of a non-conforming setback, there you have a garage that are expanded forward and upward, and that causes the variance. I've been in contact with the applicant for a couple of months, going over the application, going over the variances, just, you know, looking at different scenarios. Originally, there were about two or three variances, and they whittled it down to just a one, so I think he's representing himself, and also, he's the owner and he provided his own plans. Is Matt here, or just...
No.
Okay. So, the variance, the waiver request, they should request a waiver for the variance checklist? I don't see any issue with that with this application. And again, the 200-foot list is actually in my report, 200-foot map. Again, I just want to remind you that the property is subject to the 50% improvement for the flood damage prevention ordinance, and that will be, once it comes in front of Jimmy, he'll be looking at that. I don't think you're going to exceed that with this application.
I have a question. There's no indication of one whatsoever, who prepared it?
Did you prepare these plans?
Let's swear, we'll swear you in, and we'll just state your name and address for the record.
Glenn McDonald, 7704 Bay Shore Drive.
And you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you prepare these plans?
Yes.
Does that need to be written?
Are you the owner?
I am the owner, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm the owner and I'm representing myself.
Do we need something written on here that he prepared? That's okay.
I mean, he's saying it under oath, if you're approved, would you submit a simple affidavit stating that you've prepared these plans?
Sure, yes.
I'm okay with that.
That'll be a condition.
If you're approved.
Clem, underneath the building code, under the building code, he can submit plans under, you know, drawn by him, as long as he signs them.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, we'll sign them. We're new with this.
When you submit them for building construction plans, you have to sign them.
This is project number 55706.
Wow.
Mr. McDonald, are you, are you a builder?
I'm sorry?
Are you a builder?
I am.
Yeah, so you're probably familiar with drawing plans and everything like that, yeah. You're not just some Joe Schmo that walked in.
No, that's, yeah, no, I was, I was just waiting to introduce, but no.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
My turn, okay. Again, my name's Glenn McDonald, I'm representing myself, I'm here with my wife Danielle. This is, this is kind of a coming home of sorts. Danielle works in the city, our kids went to school here at the city, they also worked in the city. We currently live in Agarbor Township, but we are fortunate, we've been looking to reside here in Margate for 20-some years, so hopefully this is the culmination of that. The house, the renovation that you see, we believe is pretty de minimis. We're really just looking to make the house a little bit maintenance-free on the outside with some siding upgrades, and basically just build some second-floor living space over, over the garage. As was pointed out, there's just the one variance we're looking for, and we're not looking, it's the side yard setback, we're going to stay within what the existing is. We've actually talked with the neighbor directly next door, and they told us they were in support of it.
These the ones with a swimming pool?
Yes, yeah, if you're looking in the house to the right. And the wall that joins us actually has, there's no windows there where the second story would go.
I have a question, and your bedroom window upstairs, it looked like it was up high, is that true, in the bedroom?
Yes, the windows that are up high, and the newly proposed would be trans, some windows on that side as well.
Okay, so you're not looking down on their pool area?
We are not, yeah, we won't even, they won't see us and we won't see them.
Okay.
And we purposely did that with the, you know, with the floor plans. As was brought up before, this is a great house and a great neighborhood, that's what attracted us to it, so we're not looking to tear it down, we're looking to just kind of bring it up, up to current standards a little bit. We'd love the look of it, the colonial look of it that blends in with all the other houses, that's really what attracted us. So, we're just looking to make some modest improvements and make a little bit more of a living space on that, on that second floor.
New kitchen cabinets?
We'll see. If you know anybody, let me know.
Any questions?
I have...
Are you proposing to add any central air?
Yes, we will be looking to do central, uh, central air.
Just make sure the compressors go in, I guess, what you would consider the backyard.
Right.
Can't face the street.
Which is right the side of the back. Okay.
Glenn, you came to my office and you entered into the opportunity, if the grant came available, to take advantage of elevating the structure, is that still inconsistent?
Well, we, we had talked, again, we like the look of the house, you know, the way it is, we, I'll be perfectly honest, we, we don't want to raise the house, we don't plan to raise the house anytime soon, because we just don't think that it works with the scope of the neighborhood in the, in the house. I know we had talked about it, I know you had actually recommended it, but we are not planning to raise the house at this point.
Was there any sandy damage?
There was not.
But they meet the 50% or they're anticipating?
I don't know.
They're anticipating meeting the 50%.
Yeah.
All right. And that's in aggregate over seven years.
Right.
Right.
Thank you. No.
No.
I just, I just...
We just like to tell people ahead of time that, no surprises.
No, we, we've, I appreciate the work that, you know, Roger's worked with us quite a bit, he's been very patient with us, as has, as has Jim, as has Joanna, and we, we appreciate that, and we're, you know, we're eyes wide open, and we know exactly what, what the criteria is.
Anything else? Anyone here from the public have any questions, comments? Public portion's closed. If there's no other comments or questions, you have a question? Don't look at me. Would you read the motion, please?
Sure, we need a motion for sea variance relief for a side yard setback to the building of 3.2 feet, where 10 feet's required, and a waiver request from the submission of a variance checklist. The conditions will be everything in Mr. McLaren's report dated November 28th, 2018, and all, and the applicant will comply with all representations.
One moment, Roger, you said they're going to have three trees, is that in the plans?
You need to figure three trees.
That's not, not a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Two on the side street, one on bay shore.
Put the conditions...
You have one there already, right?
Oh, okay.
I'll put the conditions as, the applicant will provide for three street trees, he'll, he'll sign the plans as required when he goes for his final construction permits, and then all other conditions set forth in Mr. McLaren's report on November 28th, and all other representations made by the applicant during the course of the hearing will be followed.
I'll make a motion. There's Tom, oh, Tom's in the back.
I'm still not at all comfortable with the reduction of these drawings, I'm going to abstain.
Jim Gallantino?
I think the client provided enough information to show the hardship, but I do want to make it clear, we, we wish, we wish to get you elevated, and if the funding comes available, I hope you change your mind. I vote yes.
Rich Patterson?
I also vote yes. My concern was with the neighbor, and when I saw those windows were elevated in the bedroom, there's no windows on the neighbor's house, and they can't look into the neighbor's yard, so I, I don't see any detriments here, I, I vote yes.
Mike Cristaldi?
Where the neighbor's pool is so far back, and there's nothing in there that's going to create any problem for air, light, or anything, I don't see any detriment to anybody there, I vote yes.
Margaret Gubernalti?
I see it as a, I see the plans are really well done, they're nicely done, I think it's a, an improvement aesthetically to the house. I agree with Mr. Gallantino that it should be raised, if it could be. There are no neighbors here that are against the second floor, and I'm glad you're making it back to Margate, and I vote in favor.
Craig Palasana?
It's nice to see an older home being renovated, bringing kids back to the city, I appreciate that, and like they said, like we said, there's, the neighbor has no windows on that side of the house, there's no negative aspect to it, I approve it.
Mike Richmond?
I think it's going to be a nice addition to the neighborhood, I think that the way it was designed, they, I'm glad that the neighbors were taken into consideration.
The application passes six to nothing with one abstention.
Thank you very much.
Next case, Kyle Butts, 8405 Atlantic Avenue, Block 112.01, in the S-25 District, to grant a sea variance relief for front yard setback, side yard setback, driveway width, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. I just, we are, before Mr. McLaren gets started, removing several of the variances, so I know Roger prepared the report, which is very in-depth, but just want to bring a few things to Roger's attention, which we decided on before we started. Curb cut is eliminated, we're going to go 20 feet, not 23 feet, and the 412 pitch is going to be a 512 pitch on the roof, so those two variances are not requested, they're completely withdrawn.
All right.
He is not. Pete is going to be testifying, and I'll explain why very shortly, because Mr. King had a death in the family, so Mr. Weiss has been kind enough to come and give us his insight.
It's Roger's turn.
Sorry, Roger.
That's all right. All right. So, my bridge report is as follows. It's for the application of Kyle Butts, 8405 Atlantic Avenue, Block 112.02, Lot 1, S-25 Zone, in the firm AEL, elevation 10 zone, so the bottom of the floor has to be elevation 13. I don't see that being an issue because they are raising the house to include a garage. So, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to elevate an existing single-family dwelling to comply with the city's flood damage prevention ordinance. Some additions are, that are proposed are triggered, the variances are described as below. The zoning chart is on Page 2, documents reviewed are on Page 3, Section 2, the variances required are as follows in Section 3. Front yard setback building, Knight Avenue, whereas 10.8 feet is a required prevailing setback, 5.7 feet exists, and 5.7 feet is proposed. Again, this is an expansion of a non-conforming setback. Not only are they lifting it up past the BFE plus 3 that the state allows, but they're expanding the second floor. Second relief requested is a side yard setback, whereas five feet is a minimum side yard setback along Atlantic Avenue frontage, 2.6 feet exists, 2.6 feet is proposed, and again, this is an expansion of a non-conforming setback, you're lifting the house and you're adding volume to above. Number three, combined side yard setback, where 22 feet is the minimum combined yard setback, 20.9 feet exists, 18.9 feet is proposed. It's a non-conforming setback, combined setback, but it's actually being made worse a little bit, but the applicant will explain why that is, they're shifting the building to comply with the front yard along Atlantic, and it's a corner property, so there are two side yards, two front yards. Front yard landscaping, whereas 65% of the front yard is required to be landscaped, or 50% due to stairs for first, finished floor entry, existing is non-conforming and proposed is increasingly non-conforming, again, I want to see those numbers on the final plans, but there, it definitely is a variance on this. The curb cut has been eliminated, as is the driveway width, which is regarded to be no more than 20 feet. The minimum roof pitch, I believe that they kept it at 412 originally because they weren't sure if they needed a height variance, so they probably kept it down. My analysis concluded, concluded that since we now allow eight foot for a garage below, and zoning starts at nine, they probably have some wiggle room to, to make the 512 pitch work.
That's correct.
And still comply with the height. So, the commentary is follows, actually, the waiver requested variance checklist item 1A, copy of an area map showing all lot lines within 200 feet. I think that waiver is a standard waiver for this type of application. The commentary is follows, front yard building setback doesn't meet the required prevailing setbacks, however, one exceeds the minimum and still requires a variance due to the expansion of a non-conforming setback. Lots of words. Two, the minimum side yard setback doesn't meet the required minimum side yard setback along Atlantic Avenue frontage on that one side, minimum combined, the variance as described previously. Front yard landscaping, we want to see the, the actual numbers on that. Item number five, that goes away, item number six goes away, and here's my conclusion for the height variance. The height variance was originally requested, but due to the land use ordinance changes, the height proposed meets, was less than the maximum permitted height, topical information is required, and they have since provided that information to me. The garage height is permitted to be eight feet above average existing grade, and zoning height begins at nine feet, so they do comply. Recommendations for the C2 criteria that they will have to provide testimony for. Again, they are getting rid of the garage, detached garage, which they were required to do in order to have garage space up below, and I think I had a call from one of the neighbors that was directly impacted by that garage, and I explained it to her, she seemed to be somewhat satisfied about that. She was dissatisfied about something else, but it has nothing to do with this. The, if there is any lot grading, it has to drain to the street on both corners, both sides, a street opening permit will be required. There aren't any street trees, we require four, two on Atlantic, two on Knight, and a grass planting strip on both streets also. And the trees must have a minimum caliper of two inches, as per the new ordinance revisions. Again, just some other requirements in there. And that concludes my report at this time, I turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren, Eric Goldstein on behalf of the applicant, Kyle Butts. Just by way of background, a few things, Mr. McLaren did reference that the neighbor was probably dissatisfied, it's most likely she was dissatisfied with me, she did not get her card in the mail and wanted proof that it was sent to her, which I was able to supply her with, but as you know, we don't control the U.S. Postal Service, so the fact that she may or may not have been home when the mail was delivered, clearly that was an item that was taken care of. I spoke to the Board Secretary, I know that that green card hadn't been signed, but it was sent, and by law, that's all we have to do.
I explained that to her too, and she seemed to be okay after that.
Better one than me explain that. Additionally, just for the board's information, initially, there were a number of variances that were probably not necessary, but were applied for, maybe for a few reasons. The original architect who prepared the plans, who unfortunately can't be here, he had a death in the family, was looking at a couple of different options, with Pete coming in, obviously, being familiar with Margate Zone Code and municipal land use law, we were able to work at a very rapid pace to get rid of a few variants, because we don't want to come in, even though it is a house raise, and ask for things that may or may not be justified. What the case really comes down to is a raise where the house is actually being shifted away from Atlantic Avenue, the coverage remains the same, the setbacks remain the same on one side, but there is an increased... street on Atlantic has as much architectural relief as possible, the stairs being something that makes it look more like a front.
And also got rid of the potential variance for front yard setback.
Correct. Mr. Butts is aware this property could have been demolished. He didn't want to do that. He wanted to raise it. Obviously, it's a nice house. It's in a great location. The economics of it make more sense to raise it and try to renovate as much as possible as Mr. Galantino will require, so we'll just say it now. If this is approved, we will sign the non-conversion agreement and file that with the county so that there's no possibility of having any livable space or habitable space below the required base flood. And with that, Mr. Weiss, if you don't mind being sworn in, we'll take some testimony about the plans, even though you didn't prepare them and the variances that are necessary in our proposed house raise, so.
And Mr. Weiss, just your name and business address, please.
Peter Weiss, 101 North Washington Avenue, Margate.
And you swear affirming testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thanks.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Weiss, as you're aware, has testified before this board on many occasions.
Would you guys use the two microphones, please? Could you use that one?
We just ask that Mr. Weiss be qualified as an architect.
We accept his credentials.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Weiss, if you don't mind walking us through the plans that were prepared by Mr. King and your observations on what we can do to make the plans maybe a little bit better and the variances being justified, hopefully, as the board will agree. So it's all yours, Pete.
I'm sure you're all familiar with this property. It's possibly one of the ugliest in the city, as far as I'm concerned. So there's a one and a half story building on the property right now. It's fairly close to the ground, an existing detached garage in the rear. So what they propose to do is lift the house, put parking underneath, move the house back 3 feet to the north. The north arrow's in the wrong direction here. It's that way. So that will provide more front yard setback, obviously along Atlantic Avenue, and obviously allows the stair to go in there without a variance. Otherwise, it would be over the property line. So I'll just touch on a couple of things. As Roger pointed out, there's really no reason why the curb cut can't be shrunk down. I mean, the garage doors have a fairly wide space between them, so they could be pulled closer together and eliminate that variance. I'm not quite sure why there was so much space here. If you do the math, you'll find it's probably at least a 9-foot ceiling on the ground floor, so we're going to lower the building a foot. So that'll eliminate some steps and a little bit of building cost, but you know, there's really no reason to have a 9 or 9 and 1/2 foot ceiling on the garage. So and once you calculate the height, I mean, currently, the way the building sits, the height was only like 26 feet. So, because you'd measure it from right here. So we'd lower the building, add a couple of feet to the ridge, we'll get the roof pitch back over a 512 pitch. It'd still be a couple of feet under the height limit. What else?
Peter, how about the landscaping?
I didn't look.
When they take the garage out and the, are the pavers back there? I didn't notice. Yeah, paving, concrete. Is that all going to be grass, do you know, Eric? Peter, do you know?
Let me make one quick observation about the Atlantic Avenue side. I calculated, since we're moving the building back, it actually increases the landscaping on Atlantic Avenue a little bit. It's only about 20 square feet, but there is an increase on Atlantic Avenue.
Mr. Manos, Mr. Butts is here, probably can supply some information while Pete's testifying. He hasn't been sworn yet, so I would imagine.
Sure. You can just come up, state your name and address. I'll swear in.
Kyle Butts and home address is 28 Wheatland Circle in Lebanon, Pennsylvania.
Do you swear affirming testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
Basically, what we were looking at with that backyard was doing lawn scaping, so that would be grass area and then some arbor veda where the back property line would be that's currently the garage for a bit of privacy there and then also be able to get some landscaping in that backyard area.
Okay. How about along Canyon Avenue where there's railroad tying now with some landscaping all along that side, up to the new garage doors? Do you have it on that side too?
Yes, absolutely. On Knight Avenue.
Yes, Knight, what I said.
Canyon.
Has this been your house or did you just buy this house?
I purchased it approximately a year ago.
Okay.
Are you going to live in this house or is this a flip?
This is a flip.
Do we actually know the percentage of the landscape? It's, in here, it says you didn't know it, Roger.
For the front yard?
It said, equal to or less than 65%.
For the front yard, it's not meeting the requirement. It doesn't meet it now. It doesn't meet it as proposed. I need those numbers to see. They need a variance for that. Overall landscaping, I think they comply with that.
You think, but you're asking us to make a decision without having any numbers. I mean, I don't feel comfortable not knowing if it's 10% or 50%. It's a big difference in my opinion of what.
Anyhow, it's being increased.
Tom, I think with doing the governor's strip and adding all that grass on the back side, it's advantageous to have the project, you know?
Right, but we still don't know.
We still don't know the number.
If it's requiring 60, hypothetically whatever it is, and it's only 20, it doesn't matter whether it's increasing.
Right now, when you look.
We need those numbers so we can make an informed decision.
Right now, when you look at the house, there's a lot of concrete and we want that to go away. Just the sidewalk is all we want to see. And rest is all grass. Yes, yes.
Is there a way that you can give us a semblance of what the percentage would be, Peter?
Is there any area that could be landscaped that's not being landscaped?
The current garage structure, that will all be landscaped.
No. Is there any area with your completed project that could be landscaped that's not landscaped? Or are you landscaping everything that's available? Their overall landscape number is going to be going up by removing that garage and the driveway in the back. My concern was the front yard, which is Atlantic Avenue and Knight Avenue, with the addition of the 20-foot driveway that didn't exist before, and even with the elimination of the 10-foot wide driveway, you are gaining a little bit by moving the house back 3 feet. They need 50% because they're adding steps to get into the building. They're probably right around. But is there anywhere they could put more, is my question? Or are they maxed out anyway? In the front yard, I think they're maxed out. I mean, they could add driveway strips. I wouldn't recommend that at this location.
What's their shortage?
I'd say they're within 10% of 50%.
Give me a number.
We don't have a number.
40%.
So they're, 10% of 50% is not 40%?
I'd say within 10% of 50%.
What I'm interested in is seeing more shrubbery.
They have to comply with shrubbery.
There's nothing drawn in as far as shrubs, right?
Right, well, they won't get a CL until they comply with the zoning ordinance. Which mandates the shrubbery. That's automatic, no matter what.
And if it's increasing, then they're maximizing what they can do.
And again, one reason I didn't really, wasn't very picky on the front yard landscaping is it is a house lift. I mean, it's not a new house being constructed. They are increasing the front. It's a de minimis situation with the front yard landscaping. They had to comply with the shrubs, no matter what. They were complying with the shrubs.
Right, but Roger, what you're looking at is, like most of the typical applications, they're raising it to maximize the ground coverage and then they're putting in a double driveway, which is taking away landscaping, to not giving us numbers. And he's just going to turn, he's trying to make it look real pretty for somebody to flip it, but we're not gaining anything out of this to get a little grass. So, but now, let me, so what I'm saying is, is that not knowing if it's 35 or 40% and without steps, it's 60 and we're going for 50, and we're saying, oh, well, he's going to put a governor's strip in, big whoop.
We have the number.
Why do we have to have two driveways, a double driveway?
I just did a quick calculation. The building and the decks combined are 56% coverage, so in addition to that, you have the driveway and these couple steps, so I don't think that's going to amount to, I think we're going to be right around 35%. If we pull out the concrete in the back here along the.
That's for your total landscaping, right?
Isn't that what's required?
Right. My concern was the front yard landscaping. That's my point. You can't do a whole lot about that.
By increasing the size of the driveway, at least we're getting more off-street parking in an area that's a crowded area.
No, no, that's not, that's grass. Parking's going to be under the building.
Oh, okay, it's under the building. But you're creating more parking than you currently have.
Well, it's the same, actually.
They had a garage, they had a garage, added parking in front of it.
Right.
Now they have 2.2 garage.
So total landscaped area we meet at 35, correct?
Approximately, yeah.
Okay.
Pete?
Okay.
Could we, if you look at the house to the left, they cut the corner back and went back in, not to cut out on the neighbor to the right. Is there a chance that bedroom, the way I'm calculating, without the little door, it looks like 17 feet. Comes up with 17 feet 9 by 12 feet 5. If we could clip that corner a little bit up in the front as the neighbor's house, so they would sort of look alike, do you follow what I'm going with that? Their deck doesn't come all the way to the edge. It juts back in and steps back in, so it gives light to the neighbor. Would you object to that? You're not losing that much, because the room's 17 foot 9. I mean, that's a, that's a pretty big bedroom. Just to bring that back in, just enough to give a little bit more light to the neighbors again, where they were, it looked like they were played enough to give it to that house. That's the architect. What do you think, Pete?
Well, there's living space on the first floor after the, the second floor.
Even if they bring that in 2.4 feet, they still need a variance.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going for variance, but I'm just going for the look of the front of the house with what's there. I realize the variance is still there. I'm just mimicking what's there to there for the light to go to both of them evenly. I think it'd be a much better look on Atlantic Avenue than just a straight box.
Our job to protect the city, whether they're here or not. Can I ask what's going on here?
We're taking what Mr. Cristaldi said and seeing if it'll work, and it will.
Okay, well, we're going to, oh, it will?
Yes.
You said you would look approximately 2 feet on that?
That's all I think. It's not much, it's just giving it a little bit more of a dimension for the front of the houses to keep in line with the street. I think you're going to do better on the look of the house in sale.
And I don't think that affects the usage of that bedroom by, because that wall is where basically that bed would be coming off of that, but it doesn't block the walkway.
Right. Clem?
So that's agreed to, Mr. Cristaldi.
All the new ground floor walls going to be razoned?
Can we have microphones, please?
They appear to be, just by the thickness of the drawing, but there's no indication. I just got a yes from your colleagues. And what's the finish of those walls going to be?
On the inside?
No, on the outside.
Part finish or?
Yeah.
Stucco?
Most likely mason on the lower portion than super shake inside of the wall.
What are you going to cover the mason? Stucco last year?
Yes.
Okay. Stucco. Yes.
Are there any interior partitions? Walls of any kind on that floor?
Don't say no. It doesn't act as an entrance or anything. It's not best to go thinking like that. It's interior stair.
Clem's looking at from structural point because of the piers that are just free standing, but if the floor interacts with the piers, I think that'll hold them in place.
Oh, you're showing columns and beams here.
Yeah, but he shows a slab too, on top of that.
The floor?
Yeah, the floor.
Well, the ground, the ground floor, which you've got 8-foot walls before you hit
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I interject something?
Yes, you may.
We are looking at a lot of missing information, a missing architect, an interpretation of what the architect is presenting, answering questions about what the architect did by an architect who's interpreting it. I think this is appropriate that we postpone this until we get all the information.
Tom, that has nothing to do with it.
But you're making changes to a plan.
That's Jimmy's. It's interior. We have nothing to do with that.
Even the exterior that you did, you're saying that can work, but the architect's not here to do it.
If they're staying inside that envelope, it's up to Jimmy.
Discussion's over. We're going to keep hearing it. Eric, one additional variance that you need is the setback to the garage doors.
It's supposed to be 18 feet.
It's supposed to be 18 feet.
You have five.
5.7. It's one of the requirements for, it's new. The space in front of the garage door needs to be 18 feet. It's only 5.7 feet. With the house left, it's hard to incorporate that. In other words, if they park on the driveway, they block the sidewalk.
Right, that's right. They didn't pitch that out?
No, he didn't.
If they recess the garage doors.
Quinn?
Microphone.
And leave it all, please.
If they go in 12.3 feet, they could do that. Is there room?
But the garage door is like here, they still got to park.
They have room. If they want.
I agree with Tom.
I think it's a big deal.
Well, then you bring. He's not listening.
You're going to block the sidewalk the way it is now. You could still have four spaces, two outside, two inside, if you pulled those garage doors
Mr. Weiss has a plan that's going to fix all of this.
Theoretically or actually?
In reality.
Okay.
There's four bedrooms, so he needs two spaces.
Okay, so I did a plan where there's four spaces. Creating a carport for two cars and then moving the garage doors back and.
So two inside, two outside?
Yes.
That would work.
Not blocking the sidewalk at all.
Right. Thank you. So you won't need a variance for that?
Correct.
So that'll be a condition. So all these things will be shown on the new plans with what Mike talked about and with the driveway pulled back?
Correct. Correct.
So where are we? Any other questions from the board? Have you done your presentation or?
I would just like to ask Mr. Weiss for purposes of completeness. If, based upon his review of the plans as a licensed professional architect, if there are any detriments, as he could tell, associated with the, with the plan as proposed and revised. Any negatives with this plan, Pete?
I think, I think, yeah, the significant variance here is the side yard setback. And that's basically, uh, you know, we're staying in existing condition. That's an existing nonconformity. It's just hard to. I mean, we're, we're at a variance just by virtue of lifting the house. And then the second floor roof is being ready just to get more living space out of it, so.
So based upon the fact that the house is being raised for purposes of public safety, health, and welfare, the house will be out of the floodplain. Obviously, we're sticking with as much of the footprint as possible. These variances are necessitated by the fact that it is a raise and not a tear down to start from scratch, correct?
Yes.
And but for raising the house to its minimum raise, which would be, as Mr. McLaren said, somewhere in the three foot area. No matter what we did, these existing nonconformities would be exacerbated by the virtue of just raising it up high enough to put more space underneath and to make this house look as nice as possible in a fairly well-traveled area of Margate.
Yes.
Harry, are, are you gonna replace?
Your microphone's not on, Clem.
Are you gonna replace the present architect with Pete?
Probably not. Unfortunately, Mr. King had a death and he's not here, but.
No, that's no problem. I'm just asking.
No, the plans that will get resubmitted will get resubmitted by Mr. King incorporating all of your comments to the extent this is ultimately approved.
I have a question. So, what, the existing property, how many parking spots are, are on the existing property?
Two.
Today?
Yeah, two.
Two, Mr. Richmond.
So we're adding two more parking spots?
Correct.
Okay. Are we adding any more bedrooms?
No.
No, so we're, we're not adding any bedrooms, but we're adding two more parking spots?
Correct.
Great.
You're creating more open space by getting rid of detached grounds.
Rich?
Yes.
We have three of us here, Tom, Mike, and myself, who wanna see this resubmitted. We don't wanna vote on it.
Okay.
I think we need more information in the drawings.
What kind of inform, more information do we need?
What's that?
Well, you can abstain or vote against it. We're gonna hear it.
Right, but I mean, I'm just curious. What, what more information do we need?
I'm just asking a question.
I, I.
We argue constantly.
Mike, Mike, you gotta talk into the mic, Mike.
We argue constantly that we don't have measurements on drawings. We don't know what we're doing. We don't know how far back. Like, if they had the drawings with the proper measurements on them, then we could vote on something.
Don't these have proper measurements on them?
No.
What, what, what are they missing besides the?
What, what did we just vote on when I, or what are we voting on when I said we're bringing outside of the house in? On that corner notch? Where do, what, what sort of, what are we voting on?
You just said it was interior. It didn't matter to, for variances.
I said the bathroom, if it's interior of the house, it's not. But bringing that wall in, it does become our issue.
It makes a, it creates a variance?
It create, it's still gonna be a variance.
Still a variance.
But it's gonna change of what they're doing. The garage is changing the whole thing, the parking, the cut of the curb.
The garage is taking away underneath the building.
There's just too much open as far as I can see.
Okay.
It's just my opinion.
Okay.
And I mean, I'm, yeah.
But ultimately Roger would sort of review the drawings when they're submitted for permits and make sure they comply with whatever's decided.
The problem I see is that, like Mike said, we don't have the right information. You're on the spot trying to do a favor by saying, oh, yeah, this can be done. But you're not gonna be the one taking the plans through fruition. So what you're saying, agreeing to, we don't know what this other architect's gonna do. You're just saying, oh, yeah.
If we make it a condition to make all these changes, then, then.
But you're still.
One at a time, one at a time.
Read your list. Like, there's things that are saying not provided, not provided. Landscaping, we don't know the amounts. There's things, you need these, you need these to make a good decision. You need this building facades. You're talking about a corner of Atlantic Avenue. It's a premier property. Why do we wanna rush and mess it up? It's our city.
Well, that's a condition of your approval. I think the only thing that's really missing that I have a concern about is the front yard landscaping, and I think that's a workable. It's, it's a house lift. All the other numbers are, they're right there. If the applicant wants to withdraw, I can't make you stay here, but.
We don't. Respectfully, what we would submit is, and understanding that Mr. Collins said is correct and what Mr. Cristaldi said and what Mr. Wazleski said, you know, Pete's pinch hitting here. But what we have is a, a project that's been submitted and based upon the board's insight has been made better based upon conditions that will be agreed to whereby the corner will be brought in. The parking will be increased. Right now, we didn't have the plan to add those additional two spaces. Based upon what the board has given us, we've agreed to give you two additional spaces. So I understand the exact numbers aren't there, and it's an unfortunate situation that Mr. King couldn't be here. But the product that ultimately gets voted upon will be a better product that's in front of you. And as Mr. Wazleski had a concern, when Mr. King ultimately revises his plans, nothing will be approved for building unless Mr. Gallantino and Mr. McLaren say it meets what the resolution requires. So understanding, it's a little bit of a hodgepodge. I know, Mr. Collins, that it's, you're looking at something and approving something on a, on a pretty well-traveled street at Margate. What you're getting now, which is why I, I, I think this board always does a great job, you've gotten more by way of Pete showing up and having his insight into the project than what Mr. King submitted. So, and again, as Cristaldi said, can you move it in? Yes. Can you add two additional spaces? Yes. All the things you've asked for will be in the resolution. Mr. Butz is here. He's agreed to it. So we can't go back and then submit the same plan and have it be approved. You're going to get what you want. It's just gonna come from Mr. King after Pete presumably talks to him and explains what he, what he has to revise on the plan.
I'm still a little off on, if the architect doesn't like what Pete came up with.
Then there's, then he's not.
Well, he doesn't have a choice.
Then Mr. Butz is gonna say.
Then you don't have a choice, okay?
I think one way to maybe handle this is, Mr. Butz is here. He's going to be the one guiding Mr. King. He can testify and say, I'm going to tell my architect to do exactly what this board requires.
I'm okay with that.
Yes, I'm going to tell my architect to do exactly what we agreed to here.
Okay. Okay. Did we come up with a size on what we're setting back? We know we're going back to the bathroom. Do we know how much we're coming in on the side? Do we?
Why don't you make it two point four feet, then you comply with the side yard setback for that addition?
Done.
Okay.
You still need a variance because you're lifting the bottom part.
It's still gonna be a variance.
Right.
And just to Mr. Collins' point, because I don't want to diminish that. We understand what you are tasked to do, okay? And this isn't, let's make a deal. But what you're getting based upon all of your collective input is a better product. I understand Mr. Collins saying, well, we don't know exactly. It is a great improvement over what's there now. So, you know, what he has said, we're gonna take, because Mr. Butz is here, all, all of this in, into consideration and presumably give you as much landscaping as physically possible. We want the house to look nice because the house has to sell. So there's an incentive to make it as nice as possible on this corner. So although we don't know the exact number, I believe Mr. Butz will also state, you would give them and make this house have the most possible landscaping. We're gonna try to find as much as we can find, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Right. Trying to put ten pounds into a five pound bag and understanding there are a, a lot of issues here, but we're trying to make it work as best we can. And we're certainly cognizant of the fact that occasionally plans get submitted, one architect or a draft, or someone else who hasn't signed. And in this case, it really wasn't a situation where we're trying to get around anything. Up until two days ago, we thought that Mr. King would be here, but. People die. So.
That, that it?
Unless the board has any questions, that's, that's it. Well, as Mr. Butz said, comply with the conditions.
Anything else from the board? Anyone here from the public have any questions, comments? Public portion's closed. If there's nothing else from the board, will you read the motion, please?
Sure. Someone needs to make a motion for sea variance relief for the filing, a front yard setback to the building along Knight Avenue, five point seven feet where ten point eight feet's required. Side yard setback of two point six feet where five feet's required. A combined side yard setback of eighteen point nine feet where twenty-two feet is required. A front yard landscaping variance of, or fifty percent's required with the first, with the steps. And a variance is required. And as a condition, you'll, you'll provide exact, precise numbers as to that. And there's also a waiver from the submission of the area map showing all properties within two hundred feet. The other conditions, as I noted, will provide a precise calculation for the, for the landscaping. Non-conversion agreement for all space below base flood. And they'll, they'll set back that addition on the second floor, two point four feet to comply with the five foot side yard setback. And the, the garage will become a, a carport for two spaces inside, two spaces outside, such that no variance relief will be required. And then any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report on November twenty-ninth and all representations made by the applicant on, during the course of the hearing will be followed.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Tom Collins?
Just so you know, I am not against your project. I think the project does have a lot of merit. However, tonight, I don't feel that I was given enough adequate testimony to make an informed decision on this. I'm not against it, so I will abstain.
Clem Wazelski?
I don't usually agree with Tom, but. Tonight's one of those nights. I like to see in detail what I'm voting on. And I can't tonight on this because it hasn't been prepared yet. So I also abstain.
Jim Gallantino?
You know what? I, I look at you two guys and you've been on the board a lot longer than I have, and that's a long time. But, um. But I, I, but I appreciate the, uh, the applicant showing he's raising an existing home. And I've always appreciated that. I mean, to me, that, I don't think we've ever, should ever stop somebody. We can't. We can't stop somebody from raising a home. He's also adding two parking spots. So from the building standpoint, Roger cannot approve a plan until they meet the intent of what the board has given, given Roger to do. So Roger's not gonna give me a plan for me to do and, uh, a review to build, for them to build. So I think the board should rely on Roger and myself and our expertise to make sure it is done, is done correctly. So, you know, in football, you know, you, you need a good center. So we're your center. We'll make sure the ball gets in the right spot. So to me, the hard, the substantial, what do we call it, Leo? It's a substantial benefit was shown by the increased parking, and they're trying to meet what Mr. Cristaldi had with the, uh, cutback on the, um, front part of the addition. I approve.
Rich Patterson?
I don't usually agree with Mr. Goldstein, but in this case, he stated the case very well. And it's the reason twice I said I don't wanna postpone this. Is every problem we had, the applicant was good enough to say, fine, whatever you want. If I, if it was going the other way, if this was a major, uh, major variances, I would absolutely agree that, that, uh, these changes, you know, the changes in that case would require a postponement. But I think it's better than what they proposed and what we've seen. And again, with the oversight of our center and water boy, we'll, uh, be able to make this go well, and I, I approve the application.
I'm the center.
Mike Cristaldi?
Uh, I don't know which way. It's gonna be flood compliant as paid for our CRS. I started this mess of the. Of the, we get so many drawings in here that there's no measurements on. We don't know what we're doing. And we don't know where we're going. But the applicant has come up with every argument we've given him, he's given into our wants. So, and I think, Mr. Weiss, you're lucky you had him, because this would have never even gotten this far tonight. I vote yes on it. I think it's a benefit for the city. Thank you.
Margaret Cooper Naughtie?
Um, while I appreciate Mr. Wazelski and Mr. Collins' input, I think, I believe there's no detriment to this application. We are getting a flood compliant home. We're getting more parking space. We're creating more open space due to the garage being underneath. Want me to wait on that? And the variances are necessitated, of course, due to the raising of the house. We have overall landscaping that is increasing. We did remove, the applicant did remove two of the variances that he originally came in with, which I appreciate. And certainly it is better than what is sitting on that corner right now, which is, I will quote you, one of the ugliest houses in Margate. So I approve of the application.
Mike Richmond?
Yes. I, I think it's an improvement. Like Pinky said, we're raising the house, making it flood compliant, adding a couple more parking spaces. I think it's gonna be a lot more appealing looking than what's there now. And I really don't see a problem with it, so I would approve.
Application passes five to zero with two extensions.
Next case is Seth Hoffman and Joanna Katz. Nine oh oh six Fremont Avenue, block five twenty-three, lots nine. S forty districts to grant relief for lot area, lot width, front yard setback and combined side yard setback and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren? Mr. Pomassano is recruiting himself.
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members.
The report is based on the, the application of Seth Hoffman and Joanna Katz at nine thousand six Fremont Avenue, block five two three, lot nine, within the S forty zoning district. The firm that we use show an elevation requirement of elevation nine plus three, which is twelve, the bottom of the floor. Zoning starts at elevation thirteen. Harshet variance and a substantial benefit variance. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of City of Margate in order to construct a new flood compliant, single-family dwelling that will have two and a half stories above a garage with parking and storage as permitted within the S forty zoning district. Several variances are requested as the lot is smaller than required. Zoning chart and the zoning information is on page one and two. Documents reviewed. I'd like to point out that the survey, I did get the survey last night. And it's part of your application that was just handed out, so the application is complete. The variances required are as follows. Lot area, whereas the minimum lot area for the S forty zone is four thousand square feet and two thousand three hundred and six feet exist in and is proposed. This is a hardship. Lot width, whereas the minimum lot width for the S forty zone is fifty feet and thirty-seven point five feet exist and thirty-seven point five feet is proposed, an additional hardship. Front yard setback to the building, whereas a required prevailing setback is six point seven feet. The minimum required is five feet and six feet is proposed. That's based on Schedule B one, Attachment four, column one. Combined side yard setback for the building, whereas a required combined side yard setback is thirteen point nine feet and twelve point five feet is proposed. The fifth and final variance identified is the third floor deck, whereas no third floor decks are permitted at this location and one is proposed. Waivers requested. Item number one is the variance checklist, item one A, copy of an area map showing all lots within two hundred feet. Again, my report shows a cutout of the tax map in the zoning that actually shows that. I would recommend that that waiver be granted. Checklist item number two, sort of, a survey older than one year. It has been provided. Again, the house is being torn down, so what exists there today. Again, the house is being torn down, so what exists there today is going to shortly be My comments are as follows. The lot area and lot width are existing nonconforming conditions and could be granted. The front yard setback does not meet the prevailing front yard setback, but exceeds the minimum setback. The combined side yard setback requires a variance, and the hardship criteria could be applied to the justifications. A portion of the building not meeting this requirement is the stairwell. The third-floor deck requires, requests a variance due to the fact that the property is not situated on a waterfront, beachfront, or oceanward of Atlantic Avenue as permitted in our revised zoning ordinance. A waiver is requested as described previously. An additional waiver is requested to supply a survey not older than 12 months. I leave it to the board whether they accept this survey.
How old is it?
Little over.
Oh, 14 months. Okay.
All right. The hardship is the unique size and shape of the property, and the zoning requirements required to fit an undersized lot, doesn't apply to an undersized lot. Positive and negative criteria must be satisfied to the board's satisfaction. Again, the C1 and C2 criteria do apply to this application. And I leave it up to the applicant to provide that testimony. Again, this is a new project, they're subject to all the zoning requirements for landscape, street trees, grass strips, all the above. That concludes my report at this time.
Thank you, Ms. McLaren. Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicant Seth Hoffman and Joanna Katz, who are unable to be here tonight, they're stuck in Florida. A few things I did want to make known to the board, obviously, this is a new property, it's a classic undersized lot hardship, but please take the following into consideration. The present house, as it exists, has a side yard of 2.1 feet. That is being increased. Building coverage is presently 51 percent. That's being greatly decreased. Landscaped area is being increased. Front yard landscape area going from 16 to 65 percent, which is a pretty substantial increase. What we've got by way of the variances, Pete designed this house to try to make the variances really as de minimis as possible. Where 6.7 feet is required for your front yard setback, he could have gone to five, didn't want to get greedy, we went to six feet. We're talking about a .7-foot variance with regard to your front yard. With regard to combined side yard, existing's 5.9, and we're starting from scratch on a new lot, but you're going from what's required at 13.9 to 12.5. So you're talking about a combined side yard of 1.4 feet. Also, very de minimis on each side. With regard to the third-floor deck, none are allowed as the project is not directly on the water. It's across from the water. Pete's designed a house to take advantage of water views, because in that area, you can presumably have a decent view through a couple other houses across the street, and we believe that that third-floor deck variance is probably the biggest one we're looking at, but that can be granted without any kind of substantial detriment to any of the neighbors. Having said that, Mr. Weiss is obviously here to my left. Mr. Maddos, he's been sworn, but I know he has to be sworn again, so Pete, if you wouldn't mind coming up, be sworn in and...
Sure, new application, just state your name and address.
Peter Weiss, 101 North Washington Avenue, Margate.
And do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, once again, Mr. Weiss has testified here on numerous occasions. Would you please accept him as a professional in the field of architecture? Thank you. All right, Pete, I just went through the variances. The house you designed is obviously pretty nice. Would you just walk us through a little bit more than I did, what we're looking for here and how this will impact the zone plan of the City of Margate and the New Jersey Municipal Angie's Law?
Okay, just a couple of comments of what exists now. If you've been by the lot, you've seen it's occupied by a one-story building. The existing building encroaches into the setbacks on all sides, has one parking space, and has negligible landscaping in the front. The lot is 37 and a half, 37 and a half feet wide, 2,306 square feet. It's undersized for the zone it's in, but it would be undersized anywhere in the city because even in an S-25 zone, it would be a small lot. So what we propose is a three-story or two-and-a-half-story residence over parking on the ground level. This design's an upside-down house, so the main living space is on the second floor. The ground floor is parking, storage, entry. And the first floor would then be two bedrooms, a bath, and a den area. All the living space is on the second floor with a study in the rear, and the third floor has two bedrooms and a bath. The exterior will be fiber cement siding with a metal roof and stainless steel cable rails in the front. As mentioned, the lot area and width are existing nonconformities, we really can't do much about those. The front yard setback for the building, we're proposing six feet where 6.7 is required, but if you look at the plan, you'll see that the only place that actually encroaches into the setback is the bathroom on the first floor here. So the rest of the building is setback eight feet or more. So on average, the front setback far exceeds what's required. Also, if you look at it another way, the front decks are only required to be five feet, we're providing six, so you could argue that we're actually a foot in excess of what's required as far as front setbacks go. The combined side yard setback variance is largely a function of the lot being two-and-a-half feet smaller than, well, in this case, twelve-and-a-half feet smaller than required for the zone, but even in an S-25 zone, it would be small. As regards to the third-floor deck, you know, it's accessible, it's fairly small, being only five feet deep. It's accessible only from a bedroom. It's built into the roof because we have this sort of pent roof running around the outside. And as has been discussed in other cases, I think the third-floor deck actually increases the safety of the building in the event of a fire, providing another way out of the building, another access point that's easier than climbing through windows.
How high is the pent roof, Pete?
It's a foot and a half.
So you have a foot and a half roof and then a foot and a half of railing on top of that. Mr. Weiss, you've gone through your testimony, we'll ask some questions in a minute, but based upon your experience as a licensed professional architect of the state of New Jersey, do you see any detriment associated with the design of the house?
Yeah.
And to the extent there could be any detriment, would the benefits outweigh the detriment greatly, in your professional opinion?
Yes.
Okay. Unless the board asks questions, and if you don't answer them, that's pretty much it.
I do have another comment. One is that, as with all new construction, we don't require a grading plan, however, I always, as being an engineer as well, I always recommend that you grade from the rear of the property to the front of the property, so all the water goes to the street. I like to see that applied here also.
Of course.
Okay, yes.
And you're going to need a non-conversion agreement again for the ground floor.
Of course, new construction, we'll give that to Mr. Gallantino before CO is granted.
So Pete, the only way you enter or leave the house is through the garage, and or the stairs, the doors, right, I mean...
Well, yeah, I mean, this acts as an entrance foyer at grade and the steps, yes.
So there's no exterior deck to access it, no exterior stairs?
Correct.
Interior ceiling height there, Peter, looks like it's greater than eight foot.
Eight-six. Where? The ground floor? We have eight feet. Ceiling height? Yeah. Eight foot on the ground level, eight foot on the first floor, nine foot second floor, eight foot, no, for part of the third floor.
Because your plan looks different, showing the eight foot much lower, and you're like 15 inches difference on the...
No, that's just, that's the way the line's running. It's eight foot to the dash. You're looking at the, it's a five-foot fence dash.
Okay, so you're going all the way up to there. Got it.
We're slightly below the height requirement, Mr. Collins, six inches with...
A microphone, please.
What's your justification for the third-floor deck?
Well, it allows light air and open space on a property that's not on the water, but is directly across...
Do you get bay views from that deck?
I guess we'll see, I'm not sure.
That's kind of...
It's pretty tight between the two homes. You will have some, may have to, you know...
So it's not like a house in the middle of the island here, you would have water views from that deck?
Correct. To the west, there's one house between you and the bay, so...
And depending on the time of year, Mr. Patterson, there's trees right in front there that are potentially, you know, if they're in bloom, maybe blocking, but...
But at some point, you're going to have some type of bay view, right?
Yes, correct.
But you're trying to take advantage of, right?
Right. My point is that the ones where we allow third-floor decks is where you have a water view, and here's something that doesn't happen to be in that area, but this one does have a water view, so I would say that would be a justification for the third-floor deck.
Yeah.
I don't know that, under the land use law, that's much of a justification.
I understand your concern, Mr. Wazowski.
I guess the justification would be, does a benefit outweigh any detriment?
I guess the detriment would be to the house directly across, but they have the same view to their rear, so I don't know what detriment would exist as well, Mr. McLaren, but...
And the deck is positioned where you're not overlooking somebody's backyard or side yard or...
Correct. You're at the street, so you're looking across the street towards the water.
So there's no invasion of privacy?
Correct. And it's narrow enough, it's five feet wide, not big enough that you would be concerned about, you know, parties or people up there with grills. Really, the only thing you could fit up there is basically a chair, maybe a table.
So with regard to privacy, the house to the, to the left is a one-story house, so, you know, from the second and third floor, what you're looking at is the roof. The building to the right, it looks like a duplex, but it's got a two-car-wide garage, so we're 30 feet away from that building. And across the street, I measure we're actually 75 feet across the street, so... The only properties that could be affected are either too low to see anything if you wanted to look, or too far away, as far as I can see.
But unfortunately, the one thing we always discuss, anywhere on the island, if you have a house with a deck, or you're looking out a window, you're looking into someone else's window because we're so tight. So one way or another, every house will have an impact on every other house, it's just a matter of whether Mr. Weiss's design minimized that, which we believe it does.
Anything else on the board? Also want to point out that the area is rather low, and it's subject to tidal flooding, so during an extreme storm event, you will have a water view. Actually, you'll have a water view in your garage, but...
But we would also point out, that's correct, Mr. McLaren, what's there now is completely non-flood compliant.
I agree. I'm just pointing it out just to bring it to people's attention, this is a flood-prone area. We're not solving everybody's flooding problems by, they're not creating any new ones.
I'd like to add something. I think the likelihood of seeing any water from that deck is pretty slim, but I think a better argument for a third-floor deck, third-floor deck that the board may need to take into consideration is the safety issue more so than if someone can see the water or not. You know, I don't, I don't think, I mean, I haven't been up there, but I think the likelihood of seeing water is minimal, you know, but I think the safety issue is something that we as a board have to take a look at.
I think you're, you're on this group, but anytime you've got access to get out of a house, if there's an emergency, it's great. We don't want to sit here and give you some disingenuous answer, though, and say the only reason this is being done is so if there is an emergency, we can get personnel up. It helps for sure, but, you know, it's a nice house, brand-new, being built in a nice area. The applicants think that this would add to the neighborhood, but to the fact that there's a possibility, in the worst possible scenario, of getting out, it certainly helps for sure.
All we big guys have to worry about getting us out of the third floor, you know, so...
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the board? Anyone, you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Anyone from the public here, any questions, any comments? Please state your name and be sworn in, please.
Name, this is Patricia Hill, 314 North Vendome Avenue.
And do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
314 North Vendome, or Jerome?
Vendome.
Go ahead.
Okay. The side of my house at the rear is directly behind the house that is existing now there. I already have water problems from the house, and I'm not, I understand, I talked to Mr. McLaren, I understand about the tidal flooding, but I also have problems from the house as it is now. There's always water, every time it rains, there's a lot of water laying there on the side. And if it's a lot of water, it comes over to me.
So you're saying the water drains from that property onto your property?
Yes.
Right.
But Mr. McLaren did explain to me that it's supposed to go now to the street, which I hope...
That's what, yeah, that's what he just said, was they would have the... From their property, they're not responsible for draining your property, as we talked about, and you understood that, yes.
Yes.
Right, the intent was to have drain from the back of their property away from your property to the street.
Yes. That, and I understand that, and I hope that's what happens.
Can we make a condition? That'll be a condition, right, that the waters...
Yes.
Yeah, can we also make a condition that there's gutters put on the house? Do you have a problem with that, Peter?
Yeah.
And redirect all the dance vests at the front of the property, it would be easier for you, too.
It's not going to be easy.
Well...
Well, they had gutters for a while.
Well, we could make it a condition.
I mean, is there a problem, gutters?
Well...
I mean, I know at my, at my house, my neighbor doesn't have gutters, and there's like, every time it rains, there's like a, you know...
Yeah, of course. Yes, absolutely.
But they will be regrading the property from the rear to the front, which will, any runoff that comes out, whether it's from the dance vest or from the whole length of the roof, it's going to hit the ground, run to the front.
It's also very close to my house.
They're moving, as we discussed, they're actually moving the house further away from your house.
Not much.
Actually, Roger, I agree with Mike Richmond. I think in a case like this, where it's so tucked in and she's already having existing problems, I don't see why we can't make it a condition.
I have no problem with it. It's more control, I mean, you can get the, most of the water to the front of the property now, easier.
Well, there's a ton of concrete around that property now.
Right, right. Right now, it's mostly concrete down that side, so that'll be replaced with grass.
It contributes to the water flow.
Yeah, but we want to make it a condition, have gutters. Is that okay?
It is, it's okay. And then all the water, we're required to maintain ourselves, so whatever we have to do, we'll make sure that it flows to the front. The gutter should help, the concrete's coming out, I think that hopefully will alleviate the problem.
I hope so. Because it's very close to me. Of course, that back room, I use as a den, you know, and in that room a lot, so...
But the new house is further away.
Not that much further away.
Well, it's not closer.
No, I know, but, okay. I'm more, I really came to have on the record about the water.
And I think they're trying to address it, and we understand your concerns, and we agree with you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public portions closed. Any comments, questions from the board? Your motion? No, wait, would you read the motion, please?
Sure. We need a motion for C. variance relief for the following. Lot area of 2,306 square feet where 4,000 square feet is required, a lot width of 37.5 feet where 50 feet is required, a front yard setback to the building of six feet where 6.7 feet is proposed, combined side yard setback of 12.5 feet where 13.9 feet is required. Permission to have a third-floor deck, where third-floor decks are not permitted at this location. The waivers will be from a copy of an area map of all properties within 200 feet, and a survey that's approximately 14 months old, so it's not less than a year old. The conditions will be the following. The applicant will grade the property so that, from, from the rear to the front, so the drainage occurs from the rear to the front. The applicant will write for a non-conversion agreement for the space below base flood, and the applicant will install gutters at the property. All other conditions, and Mr. McLaren's reported... All other conditions, and Mr. McLaren's reported November 27th, will be complied with, and the applicant will comply with all their representations made during the course of the hearing.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Tom Collins?
I'm not gonna give you a hard time, this one. But, uh, no, it's, uh, it's much better presented. Peter did a very nice job on the, um, his plans, on his plans. He knew what he was doing with his plans. Some of the variances are just really de minimis because there's nothing we can do about them. I think normally I would vote no on a third-floor deck, but because of the unique location and the proximity in the neighborhood, I really don't think this one would be a problem. And obviously, every third-floor deck that we would vote on is voted on uniquely based upon the location and what it, where it is. Side yard setbacks, there's not a lot we can do with either. I think you're making the highest and best use out of what you've got to work with. And the concessions to the neighbor was very nice, and I was glad that you came out here and talked about it. And Mike Richmond's recommendation, I think, really ties it all together. So I vote in favor.
Thank you.
Clem Moszczewski?
Certainly is an improvement over what's there now. Looks like somebody's afterthought. I have continuing problems with third-floor decks. Why anybody needs an almost 20-foot-long deck off a bedroom. The third floor is beyond me. I think it's gonna be a big waste of money and hardly have ever used. But since I'm probably the only one that feels that way, uh, I'll go along with it. All the other items are pretty much a function of this tiny lot. I vote to approve.
Jim Calatino?
Almost got all these houses razed on that street. If you look down the street, they're almost done. I think you're last, Mrs. Hill.
I think, uh, everybody showed the detriment, um, and I think there's a, uh, definitely hardship with the third-floor deck with not being able to get any air in that little tight, tucked-in corner. With that said, I agree with Clem, and I approve.
Rich Patterson?
Uh, I'm not gonna address the, the variances required because it's a small lot. They're pretty much a given, but I, I again want to state about the third-floor deck. I believe the board's intent was for people with water views to, to be allowed the third-floor deck. And I know, I can stand on where my third floor would be on my house, and I can see the bay and I can see the ocean. And normally you can't. So when you're up that high, I think they're gonna get some views, that they'll have at least the openness out there. So, uh, I believe in this case, and I'm, I'm against third-floor decks because that's what the rules are. I know I would have voted against the one last week, or last month, um, but I'm not against third-floor decks. Even so, I think this one meets the exception and doesn't impose on any neighbor, and I approve the application.
Mike Cristaldi?
I agree with most of the board members, but Mr. Patterson's wrong. The third-floor deck in this case is not for view, and I'm gonna vote it in for safety. Somebody said to me one day, try to carry a 200-pound man down a ladder out of a window. And that stuck with me, because I was against third-floor decks until he said that. So, uh, all the other stuff, it's a narrow lot, there's not that much we can do about that, and we've improved the neighborhood with it. Um, in approval of the application.
Thank you.
Margaret Cooper Naughton?
I vote in favor of the application. Certainly, the benefits outweigh the detriments. The lot size and lot width are clearly a hardship, as well as the unique size and shape of the lot. Front yard setback is de minimis. A third-floor deck, I agree with Mr. Cristaldi, that it is a safety issue, and I certainly think it goes with the design, which is very nice of the house. It certainly is an improvement. It's flood-compliant. I vote yes. Thank you.
Mike Richmond?
I agree with the other board members, and, um, I think the third-floor deck is twofold. I agree with Mr. Patterson, but mostly I do agree with, uh, Mike Cristaldi. I mean, you're 30 feet up in the air, a little more with the, uh, with the hip as part of the railing structure. And, you know, it's a safety issue, so I'm not gonna worry about a five-feet-up deck for somebody, you know, potentially being rescued from the house. I'm gonna vote yes.
Application passes seven to nothing.
Thank you.
Anyone here from the public have any other input? Public portion closed. Other business. I, I want to keep us on line with the... I want to keep the conversation going about the decks. The safety issue is a non-issue. We voted, and the rules are you can't have a third-floor deck. With that in mind, I think we need to discuss third-floor decks. I don't know why they were ever taken out, and I don't know how the board feels. But I know we don't want big parties on the third-floor decks. But I think if a third-floor deck is cut into a roof anywhere in this city and is a reasonable amount, now this, to me, this would be a variance in that case because there are no sides on it, it's open. But I would like to talk about allowing third-floor decks anywhere if they're modest and, which has to be defined, cut into the roof where they don't bother anybody. We keep bringing up the safety issue. I agree with it, but it's not relevant because we don't allow third-floor decks. Let's allow third-floor decks. Well, you just said you disagreed. I said this one would still require a variance because it was not cut into the roof.
Didn't have any walls, Rich?
No. No, it was flat. You could see it from both sides. It was, it was out flat on the roof. Uh, this needs to be discussed. I, I, that's an issue. I thought of that, but I didn't have the answer to it.
What was that question?
You gotta talk into your microphone.
The question was whether the deck would count as part of the 50% floor issue, and I think it would. It's gonna be cut into the roof anyway and take away, take away area from the roof, so I, I would... First thought, we're not voting on it now, but first thought, I think that should be an issue, but the...
That's exterior, Rich. That's an exterior part of the house.
But we're cutting into the house. We're, we're saying that deck has to be part of the inside of the house.
Fifty percent of the third floor.
Right.
Right, and we're cutting into that 50%. So could they expand the other part in that 50% plus a deck? Maybe not. It's, it's up for discussion. We're not voting on anything now, but this has been bothering me for a long time. I never knew why we banned third-floor decks anyway. I, I just, I don't know. Clem might have been there, and I would like you to explain it if, if you were there.
Do you remember the decks along Amherst Avenue when it was crazy?
Oh, my God. Were you there when they, when they changed it? Could you tell me?
It was, uh, privacy of the neighbors, being able to look down into the neighbors.
Yeah, but again, like I said, I can peep from the second floor as well as I can peep from the third. Okay. Wait a minute, one at a time. Go ahead, Tom.
The main issues were.
My third-floor deck.
One at a time.
Were safety, because there was too many partygoers in Margate. And there was a lot of residents that were not, were upset because people would be looking down into their houses, and they would show up and voice their opinions.
All right, well, I, I...
So there was a lot of issues.
Okay, well, I didn't know the issues, um, and I'm, I'm glad I do know. But I think some of those conditions have changed, and I just don't understand the privacy issue when you can see as well from the second-floor deck as the third-floor deck. But if we make it a modest cut into the building where it's not bothering any of the neighbors, even, what?
Keep going.
No, you're saying no. Tell me what?
I'm just talking. It make it part of the 50%, then it gives the applicant a trade-off.
It gives them an option. Yeah, that, that may be, that may be something we want to consider. We're not gonna, like I said, we're not voting on this tonight, but that's, that's a point to consider.
And you would limit the length and the width.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Brigantine just passed an ordinance to allow third-floor decks with, with everything that we're talking about in mind. We're doing the same thing in Metner.
Well, then we should definitely not do it.
No, but for the same reasons, where we, we want it in the front of the house, we want it tucked in the roof. You don't want to be able to see it from the, from the ground level or wherever else. I, I don't know if we want to include it in the 50%, but I do agree with limiting the size of it. That should not be, I mean...
If you go up eight feet, it's unbelievable how much more view you get around, so. And I don't know why we're taking that away from people. And again, that was very good points. I understand. I remember now. With the decks on Amherst Avenue, I mean, I'm surprised those decks didn't collapse with the parties they were having up there.
Look, in my opinion, when we first started doing the master plan, the places that really need the third-floor decks are not in Oceanfront. There are people beyond Atlantic Avenue that.
They want to see here.
They want to see.
Well, you, you just, you get a better view out there. You see open space. It's, it's...
The only problem we have, though, Roger, is if you give them that in addition to the 50%, then they're gonna get greedy and they're gonna push the envelope. You need to have it so that it's more modest, so at least a percentage of it would have to come out of that.
Well, again, that's up for discussion when we, when we, if we decide to do this, that's part of the discussion. Include the 50% or not include the 50%. But I agree, it has to have some limitations so it's not offensive to the neighbors, but...
Throw some numbers out. What do you think?
That's what I don't, I, I don't know. I think being...
My reason for this was, how do you say yes just because it's cut in and one that it's not because it's set out? Are we gonna get people arguing about that? What's the...
Well, no, we're saying you need, if you want it not cut in, then as in this case, they would have to get a variance. The people with a cut-in wouldn't need a variance. The others would come, and then it would be a case-by-case basis. Does this affect the neighbors? Does it not affect the neighbors?
I think that's gonna be a tough rate.
If we had a, uh, the Freon's house tonight, where they had 70 feet of frontage or whatever, and if they had a cut-in deck that was 50 feet long across, you know, you can have a big party up there. So you said, give you some numbers. I don't know how to limit it, but I think we have to come up with some limit that it can, can be a comfortable little deck, a few people, the owners can go out and...
Standing, standing area.
Well, no, you could have a table and chairs and have coffee out there. Whatever, I'm just...
I'm thinking five feet width.
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe, I don't know, 10 feet.
10 feet or something would be...
50 square feet?
50 square feet, a square feet.
Some, somewhere in that area, whatever. Again, all this is up for discussion, but...
You might want it to be longer and narrower, if you're willing to take a narrower piece, but maybe longer for the, uh, the actual effect of how that house is, is gonna look. It might be a, a longer house.
Don't you think, I mean, you guys are, you two are realtors. I mean, don't you think it's worth appealing?
Let's look at some other examples.
The curb appeal and...
Let's look at some other examples in that we, we have something to compare it to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, why don't you appoint a committee, and then, since we're all in agreement on it, and come up with some parameters that we can discuss, and then make a recommendation to the commissioners if we want to change it.
About 12 years ago in Ocean City, they got rid of third-floor decks.
That was that damn mayor. Well, it was terrible.
He got booted out and third-floor decks came roaring back.
Yeah, it was terrible. He just cut everybody out. Ocean City with, uh, what's his name's partner.
In Longport, they have a third.
With Goldstein's, Goldstein's partner.
Hey, Rich, with the long one, yeah, there's nobody should have third-floor decks. Just to get like, do whatever you want.
You can put a flat roof on down there.
Yeah, exactly.
I suggest you look it up.
I don't know any good architects.
Well, that's true. We can't find one now.
What do you think, Pete, size-wise?
He just drew one in.
Well, he's gonna get the biggest one that's ever been.
I would maybe, well, instead of five feet, maybe six feet, that's a little bit more usable. You know, limit it 50, 60 square feet, something like that.
50 square feet.
Limit the location of it.
And you could limit it to just the front.
Well, the front, and again, cut in, and if it's not cut in, then you would need a variance. The cut-in really gives you that privacy where you're not peering down at people other than down in the street, but...
What does that mean?
What does what mean?
Cut in.
It's cut into the roof. It's recessed. Most of the ones we agree, that we approved on the beach block before the... Yeah, before the, before the rules changed, we approved a lot of them on the beach block, but they were, here's the roof, and then there would be, I guess it's not an architectural term, I, there would be a cutout in the roof that the deck was there. So there was roof coming down on this side, and you're in the middle of it. That's what cut-in means.
When we just took the deck off and we put a window in?
It would protrude inward into the third floor.
There you go.
You can't just say you made it through. Right? You just did the Vendome 3, 301 or something?
Yeah.
I was pushed back in there, wasn't it?
Yeah. I don't know exactly what we did there, but.
All right, are we doing other business?
Yes.
Actually, if they want to get some projection from the weather, they're, they're set back in to even test it.
Anyway, I wanted to bring that up, and then Roger wants to bring something up.
You wanna talk?
Oh, yes.
He's leaving.
No, just pack it up. I'm just, I'm being efficient for once. If, if anyone's ever approached by an applicant during, before a hearing, after a hearing, during a hearing, during a construction process, before they get the zoning approvals, and they reach out to you, and they're asking for zoning guidance, please, or construction guidance, please defer them to my office or Jimmy's office, because right now, we're having some, a fireman here in town saying he met with planning board members and saying everything was fine after I failed him on a bunch of things. He didn't say any names, and, you know, I, I don't know, but it just, there's, there's our keys.
That was me, and I told him there was no compromise here, that he was wrong, and he had to follow you, unless somebody else told him different.
He's, I don't know. He said everything was fine and there was no problem, and he didn't... He said he didn't need any permits. Doesn't need any permits. Well, I told him, I said, if you want to do what you're doing, go ahead, but I'm not giving you...
He said, what can I do to compromise? I said, there's no compromise here. And he said, well, that's what my lawyer told me. I said, well, he's right. Take out the stone, put in great landscaping. That was the answer. Craig told him the same thing, so I think it was Tom.
That's not what he said.
That's Tom Collins, I think. No, absolutely.
Now, he said the planning board members said they see nothing wrong with what I did. And, and they wanted, he wanted to put a fence in, and he said, don't worry, you don't need a permit, and...
Well, he's, he's... I know he talked to Craig and me, and I know neither one of us said that.
I, I suspected that probably happened, and Mike and I talked about it today. I said, there was probably some loss of, loss in translation.
It was pretty damn clear. I said, there is no compromise. I don't know if he talked to anybody else. Was it Craig and I that he said he talked to, or anybody else?
He didn't say anybody. I, I didn't ask who, who the members were, I was, if he wanted to surrender. No, he said firemen. I was pointing you as a...
No, I, I have another question. I thought... I thought, I thought Roger was this, I didn't realize you were bringing that up. You were talking about the, uh, front yard setbacks, and we were gonna talk about it after the meeting. Weren't you gonna talk about this?
Yeah, I mean, I have some ideas.
Two-hundred-foot rule has been causing nothing but problems and unfairness?
Well, my biggest issue is it's a moving target. It changes block by block, day by day. It's a different number, right? My original thought is, like, Winchester Avenue, Monmouth Avenue, Amherst Avenue, they should all be five-yard setbacks, because we're forcing them to put the drive... Five foot for the front yard.
Right.
I missed a word, but I meant, you know, whatever.
Right.
Fill in a blank, goddamn it. We on record?
Yes.
Right. That should be a five-yard, or five-foot standard setback, because we are forcing them to put the driving on the other side, shrinking it out. Parkway section should have its own standard along Metner Avenue.
Such as more than five feet?
I'm looking at 15 feet probably, maybe, yeah. I want to maintain integrity of that parkway. That, that's, that's, that's the jewel of Margate. Atlantic Avenue, same thing, possibly 15 feet, uh, maybe a little bit of a compromise because there's lots a little bit smaller than along Metner Avenue. But all the side streets have it be, uh, either a percentage of lot depth or a solid number.
Roger, I kind of agree with you, but I think we're being too generous at five feet. I think we should make it a standard of like eight feet, so you have a little bit more...
Well, it's five feet now, I mean...
If you're gonna start with the tree canopies and things like that down the streets, you're gonna want...
I mean, these are, these are mainly, again, these are mainly corner properties. This is, this is...
This is, this is for discussion, and we can change it or not. But what I found is, we get houses where there's one house on the block, and the next-door neighbor's stuck with that setback. We had one on Atlantic Avenue. It was like 18-feet setback.
I agree.
But where my point was with Roger is, we grant a five-foot setback because of the 200-foot rule, and now somebody's coming in next month. Well, we just changed that the whole thing because of that one being, so now they can come out further, and then that one brings it to they can come out further. So we got to draw a line.
I think we got to get rid of the average setback. I think we got to do what Roger says.
Well, that's my point.
Well, here's the other issue. If somebody wants to come in, they want to add a second-floor deck. They have a first-floor porch. It doesn't comply. Like, I have the situation on Wilson Avenue. It wasn't a Harding. Somebody granted them approval next door to come out five feet away, and it didn't meet the prevailing setbacks. And they're pissed off at me because I denied them a permit, because it doesn't meet the setback, but it's still further back the end door next door. If we had a hard number, a hard, it's just easier for to regulate. It's easier for the applicant to understand what they need to get.
Right.
Now, this guy wants to put like a porch on, he's going to spend 800 bucks to get a 200-foot setback survey. And now he needs a variance, because it doesn't meet prevailing.
Well, these are two issues I think we should.
And that's, that's something I'm going to work on in 2019. I just wanted to bring it up to you. And what was the other one? Develop a grading plan requirement and ordinance.
Yes, that, yeah, that needs to be mandatory.
It's worked out well in other towns.
I was going to bring it up tonight. When we went up there, it goes like this. So if you grade that property out to the street, you're going to have to be higher than hers.
Yeah, you are. No, no, no. I told her that. I said, look, in order for them to fix their grading problem, and to prevent runoff from going on, from their property onto hers, it may impact you, because your water won't go across their property.
Right.
She understood that.
I mean, it.
Yeah, you, it's going to have to go up.
It could devise a levee system.
You know what? Wait a minute. No, there's an answer to that. You put a concrete block wall back there on the property.
With a moat.
With a catch basin, which will double as a pool.
Did everybody sign it?
Who needs to sign?
This is for the video for Public Works.
Remember, we all watched.
Yes, we watched his fun videos. When it rains, it pours.
Would you?
Yes.
Mike, would you work with him on that third-floor deck thing?
The what?
Third-floor deck thing with Roger?
You and Mike work on that and incorporate it in your changes for next year?
Right.
Good idea.
Well, whenever they do it. We're not voting on it tonight. I just want everybody to think about it.
I'm just going to come up with recommendations to present to us.
Yeah, so we have these three things that we want to, or three things we want to change. Yeah, but they're going to do what we recommend. Maybe not you.
After you picked on me tonight, screw you.
Well, what's different? All right.
I make a motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Kitchen closes at 9:30. We're hungry.